Good evening. I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and for the opportunity to do work on behalf of the children of this parish. Guide us in our decision-making so that we may continue to put the needs of our students first and help us to do the things necessary to continue to serve them and this community in a way that truly addresses their needs. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. White, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Fochette.
Mr. Campbell is not with us. Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not here. Mr. Long? Ms. Lemoine is not with us. Ms. Dyzard?
Here.
Ms. Rodney is not here. Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Fochette. Before we go on to our agenda items, I spoke to Mr. Campbell right before the meeting and he said to let everyone know he's sorry he could not be with us tonight. But we want to wish him well and hopefully we will see him at the next meeting. And Ms. Lemoine could not make it tonight either. She was doing her-
Final exams.
Her final-
Final exams.
Exams for her doctorate. So, anyway, we will now go on to the agenda items. Okay, first item on the agenda, communications update. Super news. Good evening, Ms. Velt.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
And before Ms. Velt starts, I'd ask them tonight to deviate a little bit from the regular super news and to show the video that Chelma High showed at their student expo, which was extremely well done. The TV production teacher, Mr. Castillo, has done a really good job with the students of producing this for the high school. So we thought we would share that with you. I didn't mean to take your thunder, Ms. Velt. But I had asked them to show that and they will do the super news of the year people at our next meeting.
Yeah. It's beautiful and I'm excited to show you. The packet I have in front of you is just a collection of the press releases that we've put out before Thanksgiving break. You guys were at all of these events, I think, our Ring Day and our Day of Reflection Breakfast and also the Ashner and St. Benoit Parish Public Schools partnership with Dr. James Andrews, really cool event. And at the end of it, it does say that we have a super news special feature with the Owls Expo video that was presented to families who were touring Chelma High. That was produced and done by Mr. Chris Castillo and his film students and Ms. Eileen LaBeuf, our CT coordinator, was also helping with produce that. So, without further ado, enjoy that video. It's beautiful.
Chelma High School, a school of opportunities and endless possibilities. A school of excellence for academics, athletics, arts, and activities. There is a place for you here. Our high school offers multiple ways to earn college credit, by taking AP classes or through our dual enrollment program. Here you can earn an associate's degree while still in high school or get a hands-on experience at a high-demand, high-wage job.
The dual enrollment program that I'm involved in is welding. I've been doing it for two years now. So right now, I'm doing overhead welding where it's like a welding where it's up top and then all the stuff falls down. I'm certified in welding that's flat, diagonal, and going upward.
Some AP classes or dual enrollment classes that I've taken are AP Human Geography, AP Psychology, AP US System, Chemistry Dual Enrollment, Algebra III Dual Enrollment. These AP classes and dual enrollment classes give me that extra quality GPA boost. And with that, I'm able to do sports and clubs that I like such as Beta.
Here at Chelma, they offer a top-of-the-donch dual enrollment program. It's a lot of work, but it's what I signed up for and then today I know it's worth it. My counselors and everybody here at school and through Nunez has helped me every step of the way. I couldn't ask for a better staff and everything I get to do through it. You know, it's not just the class I get to take to graduate with an associate's degree out of high school. It's the schedule that I'm able to bounce around with through baseball. They all have helped me. I know many of my friends do dual enrollment also, but it's not just for the associate's degree. They can do a trade and different routes through it. There's many different options that they can offer and I think it's one of the best things here at Chelma High.
College credit isn't the only aspect that makes our academic experience unique. We have over 30 elective offerings that help students discover new interests or hone their unique skills, ranging from dance to carpentry, to theater to cooking. Chelma High School gives students the opportunity to try new things or simply to do what they love.
My academic experiences and activities have shaped my time here at CHS because they've allowed me to grow, learn, and develop many new skills about myself that I didn't even know I had. I've learned to socialize. I've learned to work within a group. And these are all things that can be very beneficial to me in the future and I know I'll be using for a very long time. One of the things that I never thought I would really like before and I really picked up is horticulture, which is just planting and being in a garden, how to, you know, do many different things. Growing plants straight from the seed, making soil, using compost, you know, starting a farm, you know, this type of techniques. But, you know, I never really thought ever like I would do something as planting, especially since it's such like a thing that you need for survival. But, you know, I never would have thought that, you know, in my senior year or even at all that I would be like working in a garden and taking care of plants.
Per start, right now I'm just practicing for our culinary competition. I'm pretty sure I'm going to be in charge of our dessert and pastry portion, trying to incorporate things from Louisiana to bring that to our state.
My academic experiences and activities have helped me in pursuing my dream of becoming someone on Broadway. The class at Chelma High School helped me pursue arts and act in various different ways so I could portray different people and characters. Our art, dancing, acting, and singing, through all these classes and all these particular advantages in our school, I'm able to pursue a career in theater and have a better chance of becoming a star.
Chelma High School boasts a strong athletic program as well. With over 14 teams and a slew of district championships, our successful student athletes learn teamwork, determination, camaraderie, leadership, and community service.
I'm on a baseball team. I'm a catcher. I've been on the team since freshman year. I've started since a freshman. We do a lot of things besides baseball. We help out with the school whenever we can. When there was a tornadoes in Araby, we actually went and helped out and volunteered, gave out food and helped pick up a little bit. And we've also did some things with the League of Angels that we did. Special kids, helped out with them, had a little game on softball field. My freshman year we did that with the baseball team.
In softball, I am currently the starting catcher for the Chelma softball team. And, I mean, it's really an experience. You get to be around a bunch of girls and you really build a sisterhood. It's almost like a family. And in track and field, I throw shot put. I've actually been to state the two times, my sophomore year and my junior year. And I'm hoping to actually play some state this year.
The athletic groups I'm involved in is football, I wrestle, and I do track and field. The position I play on the football team is I play running back and I play defensive lineman and I play with other special teams.
For me to be in soccer is a major like achievement for me as I've been doing it since I was little. And I had to, of course, excel academically first. One of my memorable experiences here at CHS are simply the sports that I do. Playing in games with teams and going out to eat with them. It's an experience I'll never forget.
High school is so much more than a state-of-the-art buildings. It's what takes place inside of them that impacts lives.
So one of the most memorable times is that I got elected for favorite junior boy by my peers. My peers voted for me. And something that comes from it, that you get a little certificate that just says it and then they say it on Chelma High Facebook page. You just get a notice.
One of my most memorable experiences here at Chelma High School has to be our week. We have a mural competition amongst the freshmen, the sophomores, the juniors, and the seniors. So everybody gets a piece of the wall and you have to decorate it and come up with a theme. And, I mean, you get together with your whole class and y'all basically battle it out for the spirit stick amongst, I mean, the whole school. And the pep rallies are really fun as well. I mean, it's loud and it's just exciting to be in that environment at that time. So that has to be one of my most memorable moments.
The most memorable experience I've had at Chelma High so far would definitely have to be our last pep rally, our senior freshman pep rally. I was the emcee, the host, and being on the floor of the gym in front of hundreds and hundreds of my peers just screaming and chanting and smiling back at me in the center of the floor. It feels like a different type of home. It feels like very personal being in front of all the kids I've gone to school with since elementary school and just feeling like so loved by everybody cheering back at me. That's just one of many, but so far I'd want to say that's my most memorable.
Here at Chelma, they host the Special Olympics every year and it's one of the best, I think, they can offer here at the school. Because many kids get volunteered or nominated to go help. And be a bodybuilder, especially kid, then it's amazing. Just to see the smiles on their faces and what they get to do and experience on that day. They feel, I would say, attached to everyone else and as one and their win or lose, their biggest smiles you've ever seen in the world.
So many students love their experience here. They return to Chelma High School to teach. In fact, 49 of our faculty members are Owl alum, giving back to the place that gave them so much. But don't just take our word for how good our school is. Let's listen to the experts.
So the clubs and academics shaped my time here in high school because I feel like what I'm a part in and the stuff that I do in clubs and in classes, they just really shape who I am. They help me find my interests. They help me find my strengths, even stuff that I'm weak at, when it's stuff that I can improve upon. I think greatly like Chelma High School has helped me become the person I am today and to shape me to who I am going to be in the future. Academically and personally, you know, I feel like I've grown and matured. Chelma High School takes like, does a really good job of helping students try to achieve and motivate them to do their best and try to figure out what their future could be. One of the things that I would tell somebody that is considering coming here is that they should definitely give it a chance. We're fortunate enough to be a school that has many opportunities for its students. There's many clubs, activities, and extracurriculars that you can be a part of. Here at CHS, you're sure to find a community and a place you can call home.
One of the many reasons why you should come to Chelma High School is because there's so many opportunities of just being here that other schools don't have. Like dual enrollment, so many sports, so many AP, so many dual enrollment classes that you could do in school, not just go to Nunez. And just so many, too many opportunities to pass up. To go here, instead of going here to go to a different school, this is the school to come to.
Lovely, right? And all of, Ms. LaBeuf wanted me to say that all of that was coming from the kids. That was not scripted. All of their answers were just from their hearts. Just a different type of home. I thought that line was really kind of powerful.
Yeah. They did a great job. All of the students who spoke did a wonderful job of expression of themselves about Chelma High School. Thank you so much. And are there any questions or any other comments, Ms. Jackson?
Kudos to whoever got those high school kids to talk about their feelings-
Yes.
-and their emotions. That was the best part of the talk. If you have a teenager, you know that they don't suck at anything. So that was really amazing.
Well, I think a lot of the students in the film class were helping Mr. Castillo and Ms. LaBeuf to film and edit. So I feel like maybe they thought that they were kind of in like a safe space since their peers were kind of behind the camera also. I don't know, but I just, they really opened up. You know, some of the things they were sharing were really quite deep and profound.
And I heard it was very difficult to edit it down to that period of time because they had lots and lots of footage. And I do want to give a shout out to the TV production teacher again, Chris Castillo, who did an unbelievable job with his students in putting that together.
That's beautiful.
Absolutely. Okay, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you so much, Ms. Velt. We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Y'all have a good night.
You too. Good night. Okay, next item on the agenda is the financial compliance report for 2022-2023. Is Mr. Fernandez here or?
Well, we had done the presentation at the committee meeting and someone had said, well, maybe we should accept it at the regular meeting. We've never done that before. But if y'all would like to make a motion to accept it, it's fine. The audit is the audit and it goes into the legislative auditor and the other agencies. So we did review it thoroughly with the auditors at the committee meeting. If anyone has any questions or comments or concerns, it's mine to hear them at this point.
The bottom line is there were no exceptions?
No exceptions. Unqualified opinion, no exceptions, not even, no adjustments, no suggestions for improvement on internal controls. So-
I would make a motion to accept the audit as presented at the committee meeting.
Okay, there is a motion by Ms. Harris. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Warner, any further discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Fochette. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Next item on the agenda are top gains and opportunity honorees. Good evening, Ms. Lametta.
Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you the list of schools in our district who were awarded the designation of top gains and opportunity honoree by the Louisiana Department of Education. And just for information purposes, the top gains designation is awarded by the Department of Education to schools where student progress from year to year is at the 90 level, which means the school earned an A in student progress from one year to the next and the school is not in any sort of intervention recommended or required. So as you see on this list, we have Chelma High School, Araby Elementary School, Joseph Davies Elementary School, J.F. Goche Elementary School, and Lacoste Elementary School, who were all top gains honorees by the Department of Education. Additionally, we do have one school, Chelma High School. So Chelma High School was a top gains honoree and an opportunity honoree. And an opportunity honoree is awarded by the Department of Ed for schools who perform in the 90th percentile or above for students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, or English language learners and do not have any designations of in need of intervention for any subgroup and/or discipline. So Chelma High not only was awarded an A school, but they're also a top gains honoree and an opportunity honoree. So they not only are they an A, but they're also helping students with disabilities, economic disadvantage, and English language learners excel as well.
Okay, any comments or questions? Ms. Harris?
I asked for you to present this because it's very important to me that we're able to recognize these schools. I know that it's hard work for them to get these rewards and these opportunities and honors. And I'm really excited about the opportunity honoree for Chelma High because as you said, it shows that we're working with the subgroup populations really well and I think it shows a lot of strength and effort in the community. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all of the administrators, the administrations, and all the teachers and the students at each of these schools, Chelma High, Araby Elementary, Lacoste, Joe Davies, and Goche for being awarded the honorees and opportunities, gains from the Department of Education. It's wonderful and it shows that they all are working very hard and I know these are not given out that easily and it's 90% of the state or is it the national, Ms. Lametta? Is it based on?
I'm going to kind of just rephrase that a minute. So it is a score of 90 in student growth. And I had explained last time, just for the sake of information, anyone who didn't hear last time, the state awards growth in two ways. The state looks for the students to score at mastery by the eighth grade level or by the 10th grade level. So if you're in any of these schools and you're not to mastery yet, they look to 750 would be your scaled score and they see how far are you away from 750 and how many years left do you have until eighth grade? They divide that and they get a growth score that you have to achieve that school year. So right out of the gate, if you achieve that growth score, you get the max points. Secondarily, if you don't achieve that, the state looks at all the students who may have similar characteristics of you. For example, if you are special education, English language learner, economic disadvantaged, if you have attendance issues and/or discipline issues, they put all those things together and then they percentile rank you as a student with other students who have those same characteristics. So even if you don't make your growth goal for the year, if you rank in the top quartile of students in the state, you would get the full 150 points. And then it goes down to each of the four quartiles where they award points. So that means the school earns 90 in the growth category for their students.
Again, a wonderful achievement.
But then the opportunity honoree is what you did. It's a percentile rank among all students who took the LEAP test in the state of Louisiana. So it's all the LEAP testers and Chelma High School for those subgroups were in the top 10% of all schools in the state. So it is that percentile for the opportunity honoree for those subgroups.
Okay, I misunderstood that question. I apologize, Ms. Goche.
No, that's fine. Again, great work by all these schools, the teachers, the students, and administration. Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
When you say all schools, is that private schools also or just public?
Just public.
Thank you so much.
Private schools don't take the LEAP. They don't take the statewide assessment unless the students are at their schools on a voucher.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions or comments? There being none. Thank you again and great job. Continue the hard work and effort at our schools. Thank you so much. Okay, next item on the agenda is an approval to incorporate the report of the general committee meeting of November 14, 2023 into the November 28, 2023 regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion or questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Fochette. Next item is an approval of the special meeting alternate placement appeal minutes of October 10, 2023 is published on November 24, 2023. There's a motion by Ms. Long. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of October 24, 2023 is published on November 24, 2023. There's a motion by Ms. White?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next item, or personnel changes for November 2023 in those highlighted or the additional ones from the committee meeting. We'll give you a minute, a few, a couple of minutes to peruse the list.
Just want to note that we did find another social worker, so we did hire one.
That's great news.
Another one, yeah.
And I know we did mention Ms. Trudy Dixon, who is retiring, but we want to thank her again for her many years of service and to wish her a happy retirement. Anyone else? And before we go on to the next item, I do want to mention that Ms. Weedy, you know, Ms. Weeden half was a longtime employee of St. Benoit Parish School System. And she actually was a substitute teacher when I was in school and that's how she started. And she had children in the school system also and then came to join us in our ranks of teachers. And so we want to wish Ms. Weedy's family a very, our deepest condolences and heartfelt sympathies.
And Ms. Weedy was a longtime teacher at Andrew Jackson High School. And was she in her late 90s maybe at this point? 101. I think she had reached the 100-year mark. And Ms. Weedy, you would see her out there in her 90s marching in the parades and being extremely active. She was really one of a kind if you knew her all those years. So she contributed greatly to our students and our school system as a whole and the girls who attended Andrew Jackson all those years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Fochette, for mentioning that, yes. And like I said, she started when I was at Andrew Jackson High School as a substitute and then went on to earn her degree, you know, later in her life. But she was wonderful. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the 2024-2025 school calendar. Good evening, Ms. Lametta.
Good evening. As you know, at the last meeting, we went over the four possible options for the employee voting and I re-provided those for you again. The first cover page was the overview of all four options. And then if you turn to option number four, which is the last colored option, which is blue, I can review option four with you because option four did win with 57% of the votes, which was 402 votes. And I did provide for you that last page that gives you each site and each option and the number of votes and the total. And just as a reminder, option four has, you know, schools, teachers coming back August 2nd through the 7th with students returning on August 8th, Labor Day as a holiday, and a one-day fall break on October 7th. That was the difference between option one and option four. So we have a one-day fall break, October 7th, the same report card conference setup that we have now. We have a holiday on November 1st and of course, Teacher Professional Development Day on November 5th for Election Day. We do have the full week for Thanksgiving. This option is the full two weeks for Christmas with students returning on January 6th. And we also have a holiday on January 20th, which is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Observance Day. Teacher PD Day would then be January 21st. Then February, we have no holiday. March, we have the full week of March, the first week for Mardi Gras. And then in April, Good Friday and the Monday following Easter would be the Easter break. Students' Last Day would be May 22nd and Records Day for teachers would be May 23rd and 12-month employees would be off Memorial Day and Juneteenth. So option four did win with 402 votes, which was 57% of the votes.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Questions? Mr. Long?
I was just going to make a motion to accept option four as the calendar for 2024-25 school year.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Long. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Jackson. Discussion? Mr. Rodriguez? Did you have? Okay. Ms. Harris?
I don't know that you'll know the answer to this, but in looking at our administrative office, do we know why so many of them wanted one over four?
Many people, and as you can see on here, the next highest one was option one. Option one did have the two-day fall break as opposed to it being split up, which gives a four-day weekend. So some people have a preference of wanting that two-day fall break to get a four-day weekend. Whereas, as you see, the majority of other people wanted a one-day fall break and then wanted the day after Halloween. So that was the difference and that was the preference there. For a long time, we've had a group of people who want a two-day fall break in October.
But you're right, Ms. Harris. That wouldn't have impacted this office because the fall break were open.
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 So I think it's just a preference, they saw one, because I was around people, you know, people, oh, I think I'll vote for one, I don't think it really mattered.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, I was like-
Well, they knew people who wanted option one, or they had people in their families, teachers in their families, or people who wanted option one.
Right.
That makes sense, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second to adopt option four, which was a majority of our employees voted for, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Velt. Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the revised 2023-2024 General Fund and Special Revenue Funds Budget. This was a recommendation by the committee. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, there's a motion to accept by Ms. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion or questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Okay, next item is are items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda? Anyone? And of course, you have before the next committee meeting to add any items on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Next item is a budget to the actual statement for the general fund provided to the board. Ms. Velt?
Yeah, just in your packet, as we have every month, it's just the update for this month budget to actual revenues and expenditure, financial statements. Also, on the, prior to the next committee meeting on Tuesday, December 5th at 5:00, we'll have superintendent's evaluation, we'll have a meeting at 5:00 prior to the 6:00 committee meeting for the evaluation to be done at that time. We also included in your packet some of the Christmas shows that we have coming up, it's hard to believe that we only have two and a half weeks before we end for the Christmas break. This Thursday, Friday, and Sunday will be the Chelmette High School Christmas Show, Thursday night at 6, Friday night at 7, and Sunday afternoon at 2. We also have the Islaños Christmas Festival on Saturday, December 2nd, from 3 to 5, weather permitting, you know, our kids will be performing at that Christmas festival as well. Our three middle schools, their Christmas shows at the Cultural Arts Center, at Chelmette High, Trist will be December 5th, St. Penoir Middle December 6th, and Andrew Jackson December 7th. At the elementary schools, it will be all day Saturday, December 9th at the Chelmette High, Cultural Arts Center, and each of the seven elementary schools will have a block, you can check on their websites, and of course, those schools will be sending, sending that information home to their parents. And then the Christmas at the Complex Tuesday evening, it was changed to Tuesday evening, December 12th, it was originally scheduled a little bit earlier, but due to what they think will be bad weather, they pushed it back to Tuesday, December 12th between 5 and 8, and we're hoping our kids will still be able to perform at that time. They're looking at the schedule changes as we speak. So anyway, it'll be really, the next two weeks are going to be filled with performances by all of our schools at the Chelmette High Cultural Arts Center on those appropriate days, and we will also be performing at the Islaños Christmas Festival, and then Christmas at the Complex as well. Okay? There's a lot going on, y'all, believe me, and for those of us who have not started our Christmas shopping yet, there's a lot going on.
Okay, question, Mr. Warner?
I just wanted to verify, Mr. Cesar mentioned that there's over 300 students participating at the Christmas show?
I, if he said that to you, I believe it, Mr. Warner, I'm not sure how many students would be performing, but with all of the different groups that are performing and the tech kids who are putting it on, it's usually around that number, so it's quite a production that they do. I know not only does Chelmette Voices, the cheerleaders, the dance team, some of the gifted musical program students as well, so it is a very, very wonderful production each year, if you have not, on the band, of course, you know, with the big numbers, so it's really a very, very nice evening of entertainment, and again, it's this Thursday night, Friday night, and Sunday afternoon, so if you haven't gotten your ticket yet, it would be a very nice thing to go to, it's very entertaining. Kids do a great job, they really do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Velt. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion by Ms. Harris, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Jackson. All in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned, thank you and good night.